Good morning. I'm Senator Gary Daniels from District 11. Today, we'll be holding a meeting of the Senate Finance Committee. Before we get started, I'll read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting we are holding is in compliance with the right to know law. As Chair of the Senate Finance Committee, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04 and six tensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. In accordance with emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We're utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and selected legislative staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to the meeting on Zoom or YouTube and via phone by following the directions and links provided on the General Court website. We have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting in the Senate calendar. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body should the meeting have any problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email remotesenate@leg.state.nh.us or call 603-271-6931. If the event is, if the, in the event the public is unable to access a meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Finally, let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states his or her presence, please also state where you are and if anyone is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. I will call the roll. Senator Morse. Senator DeLisandro.
Senator Lou DeLisandro, I'm at home, in my home, all alone.
Senator Reagan. Senator Guida.
Senator Bob Guida, District 2, present in the Senate chamber.
Senator Rosenwald.
Good morning, Senator Cindy Rosenwald from Nashua in this Senate chamber.
And I'm Senator Gary Daniels. I'm in the Senate chambers, and Senator Hennessy is temporarily excused and should be joining us a little bit later. At this point, I will invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we're going to get right into this morning, the Division of Behavioral Health. Good morning, Karen. Okay, does anyone have any questions on the items before you that are on the recap sheet? Senator Morse.
It looks to me like the House transferred out $4 million and $4 million each year. And can you explain what's going on there?
Sure. I actually received a question from the LBA about this, so I will also be providing a detailed answer in writing a little bit later today. So the $4 million that was moved from Children's Behavioral Health to essentially Adult Mental Health Services is because the contract for Mobile Crisis required the funds to be, the contract for Mobile Crisis was for children and adults, and we wanted to make sure to keep the children and adults' money separate, and so the funding actually needed to be moved to the Adult Mental Health Services side.
Further questions? Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. Karen, I noticed on the fiscal agenda for Friday, there's an item that looks like maybe it moves some money out of Mobile Crisis. Is that related to what you just explained to Senator Morse?
I would need to check on that. I'll check and get back to you.
And Karen, were, is everything that we have on the list here, was that all presented to the House?
Just taking a look. I don't believe the first two were because we didn't have the information from Milliman yet to be able to present that to the House. The others were.
Thank you. Further questions? Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. Could you explain item number three to us, please?
Sure. So item number two and item number three are related, and I'm actually going to let Katia jump in because this is related to the work Milliman did.
Yeah, absolutely. Good morning. For the record, I'm Katia Fox, Director of the Division for Behavioral Health, and appreciate the opportunity to participate this morning. So this is additional funding that we're requesting that is a result of an actuarial analysis about the cases that could be stood up for Mobile Crisis and what is Medicaid billable and what is not. And so we had done estimates when we were putting this budget together of what it was going to take to really transform the entire emergency response system that, from what it current, how it currently exists. Most of our emergency services are very focused on the hospitals and responding to the hospitals, and we're transforming as called for in the 10-year plan and in the system of care that really we need to go where people are, which is in the community before they hit the emergency departments. And so as we built this, we made assumptions about funding and about what would be Medicaid billable and what would not, just because we had to get the budget in however many months we had to go to put it together. Since that time, we engaged at the request of the Community Mental Health Centers and for our own purposes, we had Milliman, our actuary, run through and determine and go through an analysis of all the Medicaid billable services and the non-Medicaid billable services for the response system that we are developing. And as a result, we determined that we were the about four, I gotta do the math, but I'm close to $5 million short in our funding request. And so that is what appears before you in number two and number three. And again, this goes back to Senator Morse's question about really divvying up where the funding should be based on the adult and the children's population.
Follow up?
Follow up. So should I understand that items one through four, which seem like they buff up, or let's say items one through three, which strengthen the community mental health system, would help us reduce the need for emergency hospital beds?
So that is the intent. The intent is to always intervene earlier in a crisis, and that's the intent. However, we know that a 10-year plan, as I recently heard the Governor say and the Commissioner, that it takes time. It's not just going to automatically turn on a dime, that there's going to be, need to be a significant amount of work for people to access the system and to know what door to enter and how to enter that system. So in the meantime, all of the work that we're doing as a result of the court decision and of the executive order is very much necessary, and we believe that it'll be necessary for at least 12 to 18 months to add those beds and to build that capacity and to free up space at New Hampshire Hospital as we build this system and it becomes more mature.
And, thank you. Item number five, this is the contract that NAMI currently has, is that correct? To provide family support for when they have a family member who's dealing with a mental illness?
Yes, they are the current provider.
Senator Morse?
Yeah. The, is the Department currently working with the Governor's Office on rescue money on mental health that they anticipate will start to solve some of these issues?
Great question, Senator Morse. I was thinking about that as we sat here this morning and wrote a note to myself that we need to get a change order request in for the budget for the awards that were just announced last night. Not last night, the night before. So yesterday, SAMSA announced that we would be receiving additional money for our block grants, both for substance abuse block grant and for the mental health block grant. And what was lost in the headlines about the amount that the state is going to be receiving is that it's over, we have up to four years to spend it. So it's about $1 million a year for each. It's 5.6 for substance abuse, and it's $5 million for mental health. We have until July 2nd to provide a plan of how we're going to spend those dollars, but they have restrictions and guidance and regulations around it. And so we're going to be looking at how we can leverage those funds to do what we need to do, which is really, again, get at this problem at the community level and not at the higher end of it. So we're very much looking forward to being able to use those funds. Those are from the American Rescue Act. We hope there will be other funds that will be a lot more flexible so we can get at some of the gaps that we aren't currently able to fund, which include housing. So we're going to be closely working within the department with our housing folks as well as the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority on any funding that they're going to be seeing coming into the state to be able to use and leverage that funding to braid it all together, bring it all together so that we can address the needs of these populations.
Follow up?
Yeah, follow up. Yeah, that wasn't even the money I was talking about. Obviously, on the American Rescue funding that's coming in, there's a lot of work going on deciphering what it can be spent on and what it can't be spent on. These three items that are involved here, in my opinion, I think we'll be going to fiscal with in June and in dealing with parts of them. And I do believe that on revenue replacement money that's coming in that bucket, we have all the flexibility in the world to deal with mental health because I think everybody believes that's an area we should concentrate on. So as we work through this, I, I believe these items should be dealt with with rescue funds, and I think we can, you'll see some of that picture start to play out in the beginning of June because I understand you don't want to build DRF beds immediately, and I understand Senator Rosenwald wants to treat this before we have to use DRF beds. I think it can be played out in rescue funds, to be honest with you.
Senator, can you just?
Happy to work with you in any way, shape, or form. We just know what the gap is in our funding need for standing up this service and getting it into, in as possible.
Senator Morse, can you clarify, are you talking items one through five?
Yeah, I was only taking up one through three because they're somewhat related. The, Mike, I did have a question on five, to be honest with you, I, before we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Want to ask a question on five?
On five, right now, it looks like the budget has about a half a million dollars a year each year, '22 and '23. Why are we coming in and asking for $25,000 more?
This wasn't a request of the Department, so I would defer to, it looks like Senator Rosenwald or DeLisandro.
Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. Can you tell us when the last time that contract was changed that amount?
I'm sorry, I do not have that right before me. I do know that it was increased more recently, but I would have to go back and look and be, to be more accurate.
Senator Morse?
Yeah, on four, maybe LBA can help me because I ran these, through these documents with them. We have, I believe, $3 million a year budgeted. It's non-lapsing. So I can't understand why we're adding $30,000 to a $13 billion budget when that first year has the ability to lapse into the second year. How much are we lapsing out of the account right now?
I'll go look that up while Katia can speak to what, why the request is there.
Yeah, it's just because we perennially, biennially underfund this line, and we always have to transfer funds. So we're, we, we always come up short because it's underfunded, and we do not, if I recall, and I know Jane Jackson is listening in, we do not set the fees. And so if there is a fee increase for these services, then we essentially have to absorb it. So we just thought that it was time to actually put in the funding to match the need rather than constantly going to fiscal to be able to, to balance in this area.
Thank you. Chair will, will state that Senator Hennessy has joined us in the Senate chambers. Any further discussion, Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. So I'm wondering out loud if the first three that Senator Morse thinks can be paid for with rescue funds through fiscal, what the timing on that would be, or whether it would be more prudent to put them in the budget with a footnote saying if they're replaceable with federal funds, then the funds, the general funds would lapse. I just, I'm not sure what the timing is on those rescue funds. Senator Daniels, I think Senator Morse wants to answer.
Sorry, Senator Morse.
Yeah, and I think I've stated this before. This is the first time I've been involved with the budget where we've had 2021 funds that are falling over that are pretty large, and then we have rescue funds that are coming into the state and the, which, you know, just the money that was supposed to be deposited by the federal government yesterday, which isn't here yet, is almost 500 million, 497 for the first year of the funding. God forbid, New Hampshire was good with its unemployment, and so we don't get it all in the first year, but the states around us will. But that's beside the point. The reality of the whole thing is, in the documents that I read this morning, there's a significant expenditure coming to fiscal in the first of June, the beginning week of June on mental health. There was no breakdown. So I asked Senator Bradley to request a one-page document to bring to you here to explain what we're doing with that first round of mental health money because it was significant enough that I believe it's addressing all the DRF situation and more. So, but there was no detail. So I basically think that what the Senate's going to want to see from the Department is what is the plan, you know, for mental health in total before we close this budget, crisis units, DRF beds, so on and so forth. So I think there's a lot going on here. I don't, my concern, there's so many transfers in the, in the budget in Health and Human Services, it, you know, and I'm not the guy to follow that. You do, and Aaron does. I bumped on a bunch of them yesterday because I left here an hour and a half after sitting here saying, I gotta get into this to understand what we're doing with all these transfers. And I can understand why the House did a back of the budget cut. Because with transfers and things like that, you're not seeing the true picture of what's going on in that line because you're moving it around. And I understand why the Department does it. I mean, I've been here when you had some owes over there that would wait till the end of the year, like for NEMA, and, you know, drop tons of money at fiscal because of moving lines around. But if we're going to have in the budget, you know, a request that needs general funds and this, and it's because it's replacing federal funds, where's the negative federal fund on this document? Because that's how I'm used to dealing with it. And that's why I'm saying I think we could wait till we get this plan of where we're heading, and then I do believe that it's going to take over the summer, to be honest with you, Cindy, to start to work with all this money that's coming into the state of New Hampshire. But my point being is mental health is a top priority in my.
Well, and if, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I absolutely do not doubt that that's where you're going to want us to go. So it, to me, it sounds like we're going to wait on these mental health funding items until a special fiscal meeting in the first part of June?
We're going to deal with DRF right away. I mean, that's what the Commissioner is doing right now. I just asked Senator Bradley, because they're meeting this morning, to try and get us something to understand what the state's going to do. I mean, it needs to be dealt with. The Governor knows that, and I don't want to short it on the budget side, but I also think there's a billion dollars coming into New Hampshire. I mean, water, sewer, and broadband, broadband actually is another 120 million coming into the state. I, it's not going to take up that money. We need to talk about investments like mental health right now while we can, especially on the capital side. But I think there's a, I'm not ducking any of it. There's two items on here, six and eight, that I think we should approve today, and beyond that, I don't think there's any financials that we should deal with. I'm not slighting the Department at all. I just need to understand, and at this point, I'm not ready.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Well, I have some other ones I would move today.
I'm sorry?
I have some other ones I would move today also.
Right, Senator Morse, did you want to move six and eight?
I'll move six.
Senator Morse moves item number six.
Second.
Seconded by Senator Rosenwald. Discussion?
This is such a small amount of money. I think what they're trying to do with it is far.
Okay. Further discussion? They are being done. We'll call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator DeLisandro?
Yes.
Senator Reagan?
Senator Guida? Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and we have adopted item number six.
Item number eight, I'll move, and I'd like to speak to it.
Okay. Senator Morse moves item number eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Senator Guida. Senator Morse, you recognized?
Yeah, the Governor's language, I believe, and Kevin's here, that was in the budget that the House removed has been what we've done forever. So I don't, unless we want to go back and change laws, we've suspended, you know, forever. I mean, Kevin can explain it, but I don't, I don't know why the House made the change here.
Sure. There, since I believe 2012, there's been language in the trailer bill suspending a portion of RSA. Back in 2012, there was language added to RSA stating that access to the state's Community Mental Health Services system shall be limited to available appropriations. And that was suspended in trailer bill after trailer bill. That language was kept in trailer bill after trailer bill for several years, and the way it was kept was by suspending the language that would have replaced it. So there is language in statute now that if this section is not suspended, would allow access to the Community Mental Health System to all individuals regardless of available funding. That has been suspended, as I said, for many years as a cost-saving measure. The Governor's language would have suspended it yet again, and the House removed that language. So what the Department's request would do is to suspend it again for the upcoming biennium.
Okay, further discussion? Motion before us is to adoption of item number eight. Seeing no further discussion, we'll call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy? Senator DeLisandro?
No.
Senator Reagan?
Senator Guida? Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
No.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries five to two.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Senator Morse?
I think I figured out why Senator Rosenwald was moving in her seat over there to say there's more. I move item number nine.
Second.
Senator Morse moves item number nine, seconded by Senator Hennessy. Discussion? Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. This is Senate Bill 157, which was unanimously adopted by the Senate on Children's Behavioral Health and laid on the table.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy? Senator DeLisandro?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Guida?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Is there anything else to be taken up? Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. I'd like to move item number 10.
I would second that.
Senator Rosenwald moves item number 10. That's seconded by Senator DeLisandro. Discussion, Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. This restores the Governor's House Bill 2, Senior Mental Health Provision that the House removed, but it does make a change to the language that had been in the introduced version from the Governor. This money cannot be spent on capital projects but must be directed to support the mental health of seniors.
Question for Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Rosen, is this, is there a non-lapsing phrase in the, in the, in this amendment?
I don't believe so, but I will defer to Mr. Ripple.
There, yep, on lines eight and nine, this appropriation shall not lapse until the end of the biennium.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Morse?
Yeah, I'm wondering if Senator Rosenwald would hold this and work with me on an amendment that I'm drafting. I think it's going, it's being sent to her, to where we were, we were carrying over some money on transitional housing. We're adding some 2021 money, and this might fit into that same amendment.
Of course, I would. Of course, I would, and I would withdraw my motion.
I withdraw this, the second, you know, pending, pending the development of another, uh, document that does take care of this.
The, uh, the, the motion and second have been withdrawn on item number 10. Is there anything else that the committee wishes to address regarding behavioral health? Singing none. Thank the department for their assistance with that, and go on to the next division, which is Division of Public Health Service.
I believe Patricia Tilly is available from Public Health. She's the current interim Public Health Director.
Thank you. I'd like to move items number one and two.
Would second that?
Senator Rosenwald moves items one and two. That's seconded by Senator DeLisandro. Senator Rosenwald, you're recognized?
Thank you. Um, these two items, um, I think reap multiple rewards for vulnerable parents and families. They've been important to the state before, and they were defunded, I believe, as the budget was introduced. And the House didn't restore them.
Thank you. Question from the department on the four items we have before us. Were they all presented to the House?
Uh, one and two, which were requests of the department, yes. And I believe number four was as well.
Senator Hennessy?
I have a question for Senator Rosenwald. Uh, can you tell me, were they in the last budget or our current budget that we're in? Because I don't see this fluctuation in funds.
I think it was called something different in the last budget.
Was it in a different organization?
Chair, I can answer that question with my mic. Uh, so, thank you, sorry. Uh, these, similar to the item that we discussed, uh, yesterday, uh, with economic and housing stability, and I mentioned that there were also a couple requests in public health that were, uh, similar requests. These are what was considered parental assistance in the 2021 budget. These were, um, budgeted in 2958, I believe, is the accounting unit, which is DCYF. Um, and I think I provided the class line when we talked about it last time, but I can go back and look it up again.
Other questions? Um, again, I, and then I, I think I've asked this question before on previous things. When you talk about adding funding, is really no indication for us whether you're adding funding to something that already exists in the budget, or whether this is something new. I mean, I look at number four, and it, it seems to imply that, uh, we would be funding this from scratch versus the other three that sort of imply that we're adding money to already existing money. Is that true?
Sure. So with one and two, tho, um, those were existing programs in, in 20 and 21. Um, so when I use the word add here, it's, it's adding it to the existing 22, 23, uh, budget as proposed, not necessarily adding a program. Uh, number four, I believe, would be an increase over the, um, the budget from 20 and 21. And the class line in 2958 is 645.
Just a question on, question on four. Karen, don't, don't we have, uh, under the tobacco settlement agreement, don't we have a commitment to spend money, uh, based, based on the, uh, the document when we signed off on, on the settlement agreement, to spend money for cessation?
You're, you're taking me back to my DRA days, trying to remember the Massor Settlement Agreement. Um, I, I don't recall what the exact language is in there is, is required with cessation. Trish, do you know any other background on that?
I don't have the exact background on that either. I know that there have been times we have not, uh, put forward any general funds for prevention services.
And did that, is that, I don't think, and the question was, is that, did that put us out of compliance with the settlement, the settlement agreement? Or did we do something else to cover that?
I think we would have to ask the AG's office that question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. And I just wanna clarify that I didn't also move number four, because my understanding is that Senator Hennessy has an amendment on this, too.
I, I don't know. I, I do recognize that, uh, that you only moved one and two. My question kind of spread that out, because in each of those, they were talking about adding funding. So that's how we get into talking about all of them. But, you know, the motion before us is just on number one and two. Any further discussion? Senator Gaida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the department, um, under item two, home visiting formula grant, is that an area where skilled medical personnel would be involved in determining ADLs and other medical qualifications of people for eligibility?
Um, I, I can answer that. Thank you. Um, no, that, that would not be, um, the work of our home visiting grant. This work is for early childhood, for, um, family support and parental education. We often have, um, nurses who work in partnership with this program and work with families around, um, infant development and understanding maternal depression, but nothing about ADLs.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Senator Hennessy?
Thank you. Uh, Karen, I'm sorry, I'm following what's going from where to where. But for number two, I don't see any, I see very little general funds in the 2021 biennium spent in 5896. Why would we need general funds now?
Trish, will you speak to how the program is being expanded and why it requires general funds?
Yes, hi. Um, so, uh, this program has been receiving these general funds, um, under the fund for the past biennium through those parental assistance funds that were located within the DCYF budget. We've been working very hard within the department to try and coordinate and integrate our work. Um, those parental assistance funds were designed for prevention activities, and Public Health and the Division of Economic and Housing Supports are the folks in the department who do prevention. And DCYF has been working a little further along the continuum from this primary prevention work. So these funds would continue work that we're doing right now, um, mainly with substance-exposed infants, um, and working early on, um, while women are pregnant and developing something that's called a Plan of Safe Care, where they work with their providers, their prenatal providers, and work with home visiting folks to make sure that they're ready for, um, that baby to come. And then once the baby is there, again, continuing primary prevention, family support activities, um, ensuring that infants get the access to the care they need, moms get access to the cares, the care they need, and that in general, that that family is safe and not participating in DCYF and not, um, moving further down that, uh, progression.
Follow up?
Follow up?
And to confirm, one and two were both fully funded in the current biennium, but they were cut. And can you tell me why they were cut for this one?
Sure, yes, they were fully funded, and the reason they were reduced is because we were, um, trying to meet a target in the agency phase that the Governor's Office had given us.
Further questions? Senator Gaida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, does the department have any metrics that can measure, if you will, the deterrence of people that participate in these programs from further descent, if you will, into the DCYF system?
Thank you, Senator Gaida. Yes, we do, we have a number of metrics that we use around prevention, and we use them both for ensuring sort of positive that they have access to particular care that they need, again, that folks are getting, um, screened for depression and getting access to other services like WIC, um, Women and Infant Children Feeding Programs. And we also, um, monitor how many of these families, uh, ultimately do enter into the DCYF system.
Did you provide that data?
Um, we can, we can get that data to you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Senator Hennessy?
Sorry, um, can we hold off on voting on these two items until we get that information that Senator Gaida has requested?
Without objection.
I couldn't hear.
Should we hold off?
Yeah, hold off on voting until we receive the information requested by Senator Gaida.
Well, if I couldn't, Mr. Chairman, I think you can hold off on all this stuff. You gotta vote sometime. And, uh, in, time is not, time is not on our side, and we know the programs were in place. And, and, uh, I don't think we've heard anything negative about their effectiveness in dealing with what they were supposed to. But I, I, I'll, I'll hold off on anything you want, but, but, but I think there comes a point in time when you have to vote for something. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That is true. Senator Gaida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think as a responsible committee, we're compelled to look at the data. And for programs that are successful, we should support them. If programs are not producing the results that's desired, we need to know that so that we can either adjust those programs, defund them, or do what's necessary to get the department where it needs to be to make those programs successful. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I think that's a, a, that's a fine comment, Senator Gaida, but this, I've never, I've not heard anything that says the programs haven't been productive and, and successful, and they were funded in, in the last budget. Uh, so, uh, unless, unless there's a cata, catastrophic decline in, in the service or, oh, how it was working, we ought, we ought to think about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Gaida?
That's precisely the rationale behind my request. We have no information on whether or not these programs are successful in the terms that are produced and the metrics produced by the department itself. And so that's the reason for my request for the data. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else, uh, to be taken up with the Division of Public Health? Senator Rosenwald?
I'd like to move items number three and six.
Senator, Senator Rosenwald moves items number three and six.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Senator DeLisandro. Chair recognizes Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, item number three would, um, backfill family planning for nine months of the biennium until the federal funds are able to start flowing again to all providers. That is, um, the amount that this program has traditionally spent, but for nine months. The expectation is that, given the federal rule changes, that money will be flowing again by around March of next year. Number six removes the provision that the House added for physical separation of family planning, um, providers. If we don't remove this, we will lose access to about 80% of the capacity. This will have a disproportional effect on lower-income individuals. And I also wanna say that, to me, it is discriminatory against certain kinds of healthcare providers. We don't do this to urologists, for example, who do vasectomies, but also treat prostate cancer. And I think to require one type of medical care to have two separate structures is, um, unrealistic, and I believe it is discriminatory. I realize that not everyone shares my opinion, but I needed to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Gaida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'll be opposing this motion, uh, and I might remind my colleague from Nashua that a vasectomy does not end a life.
You have to, you'll have to speak up if she could not hear your comment.
Okay. I will be voting in opposition to both of these, and I remind respectfully my colleague from Nashua that a vasectomy does not end a life. It is a preventative measure for pregnancy, not a termination.
Thank you, Senator Morse.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it makes sense right now to divide the motion, because I'll be voting against three. Item six, um, I believe I'm gonna be seeing a presentation on an amendment tomorrow to replace item number six, so, um, I would be voting no on the motion if we're gonna take up six today.
I'd be willing to withdraw my motion and bring them up separately.
Okay, so, uh, Senator Rosenwald is, is moving, uh, re, withdrawing her motion on three and six, and is moving the adoption of three. And I presume that that is seconded by Senator DeLisandro?
Seconded by Senator DeLisandro. And I might say, at the public hearing, we heard more comments with regard to this issue from, uh, both men and women who had been the recipients of, of services that were far and away, uh, described as, as life-saving and rewarding. And, uh, I, I, I think, uh, if, if you look at the testimony that we received at that public hearing, they would, they would certainly validate the, the need for this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Senator Morse?
Yeah, I don't wanna belabor it, but can LBA or the department tell us how much money's coming into the state of New Hampshire, uh, for these clinics federally? Additional money that I've heard is coming.
I think that might be a question addressed to the department.
Chair recognizes Karen?
Do you mean, like, funds from, like, CARES Act or ARPA or something like that, or Title X funds?
Yes, and funds, Karen, that are going directly to the agency, not coming through us.
I'm not aware of that. I, I defer to, to Trish, and if neither of us know, we can certainly look into it.
Um, if the question is around what are the Title X funds, which are our federal dollars that are anticipated to come to DHHS, that number is approximately $800,000, sometimes a little bit more than that. Um, there are federal funds that go directly to other providers, um, in the state in addition to the federal funds that come to DHHS.
So to clarify, the 800 is coming to DHHS?
Yes, that is our typical federal, um, Title X allotment. We will be reapplying for those funds. Currently, um, as Senator Rosenwald noted, there ha, um, there have been, there's been some language associated with those dollars that has not been acceptable to many, if not most, of our providers. Um, we are anticipating that there is going to be a change to the, um, language that is associated with the, that funding, but we do not know when that will happen in the next year.
Okay. And I think the, the question from Senator Morse, uh, had to do with funds that went directly to a provider, not through the state.
So we do not have access to that exact dollar amount, uh, because we're not a party to it, but it is often, it is, um, uh, I think many times we've noted that the state is sort of split in half between the other provider that receives funds directly from the feds and what we receive from, um, from, uh, the federal, uh, Title X. So, uh, again, we don't, we're not a party to that contract, so we do not have that dollar amount.
Okay, thank you. Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. Could the department just clarify, please, that the requested funds in item three are to maintain the level? are to maintain the level that the state budget has had, at least for this biennium? It's not an increase?
Yes, the current general funds in 2021 were $1.6 million a year. So I believe you said that your proposal on three was for nine months.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Senator Hennessy?
Yes, this question is for Karen. I believe earlier this week, or maybe late last week, we approved an amendment, and it was in a bunch of dollar amounts in there. And I thought there was either an 800 or a $1.6 million amount of Title X funds. Is that correct?
Yes, and so it wasn't... So I'll start from the beginning again. So during the last budget cycle, the Title X rules were changed so that several family planning clinics in the state were not going to receive federal dollars, Title $10. Some of those Title $10 came directly from the federal government to those agencies. During the budget cycle, the legislature voted to supplant those federal dollars, even the ones that were coming directly from the federal government to those agencies, with state general funds. That was $1.6 million. Then, when we prepared the 2223 budget, we put that $1.6 million request in the agency request. During the governor's phase, which was post-federal election, that was reviewed again and discussed the fact that Title X rules were likely to change again. And making it so that those federal dollars, those Title $10, would again flow to those agencies. Of course, that being December, not knowing exactly when that rule might change, the governor's office anticipated that that would happen by July 1st. So they removed that $1.6 million in general funds. And at the time, I told them to replace those general funds with federal funds, forgetting that those federal funds flow directly from the federal government and not through the department. So that was a mistake on my part. And so the change request that was approved a few days ago was to remove those federal funds that would actually flow directly from the federal government when the Title X rule is changed. However, it has not been changed now, is not anticipated until, at the earliest, after the first quarter of fiscal year '22.
But your estimate is $1.6 million, and that's what we approved?
Correct, correct. And that's what you approved to remove the federal funds that were there incorrectly. Request number five was the department's request to then put back the general funds for one quarter. Again, the earliest that that rule change would happen would be the first quarter, but it could be longer.
Any further questions? Motion before us is the adoption of item number three. Seeing no further discussion, we call roll. Senator Morse?
Sorry, what were we?
Item number three?
Item number three, no.
Senator Hennessy? Senator DelaSandro?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Guyda?
No.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the chair votes no. Motion fails two to five. Anything else? Senator Hennessy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull a Guyda and move Senator Rosenwald and DelaSandro's number four.
That sounds like a winner. That's a big winner. That's a big winner.
I'll second it.
Senator Rosenwald seconds. Discussion?
I'll discuss. These funds are to help address the teen and pre-teen vaping issue that we have in our state currently. And it's a specific program that we started to develop as a state. And this will, I believe, completely fund that program and get it up and running.
Is that a correct statement, Karen?
I'd actually defer to Trish on that.
Yes, that is a correct statement. It would fully fund a program called My Life, My Quit, which is a social media-based program and coaching program for adolescents, specifically focused on vaping. As many of us know, we have an exponential increase in vaping use among our youth today, which will ultimately lead to an increase in both traditional nicotine use, nicotine, tobacco use, combustible use, as well as vaping as well.
Senator Guyda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trish, do you have any, again, data on how effective these programs are? We're seeing the explosion, and I certainly oppose to what's happening. But are these programs effective? Can you produce some kind of a metric that would say we've reduced by 1% the number of kids that would? Or we've seen people quit because of it?
Sure, thank you. I appreciate that question, Senator Guyda. And I know that you know that we try and do all of our work in an evidence-based, in an informed way. Current, some of that data cannot be figured out right away. So if you put in some of these prevention programs, you need to actually track over years to see if we change the trajectory of the increase in use. So we have just barely started with this program. So we don't have the time under our belt to be able to show those long-term outcomes where we can bend the curve. Now, what I can tell you is that other similar programs that I've been with for combustible cigarettes, sort of our traditional tobacco use, also have been affected over time. We had seen record-low levels of youth using combustible cigarettes. And it was only with the increase in availability of vaping products that were really marketed towards kids with their flavorings. You know, when you're flavoring something bubblegum or mango, you're not aiming it at a 50-year-old man. You're really aiming it at a youth market. And so I would love to provide you with that data, but it's going to take us a little bit of time to be able to show how we can bend that curve.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trish, I believe we passed legislation outlawing vaping in schools. And I'm wondering if you correlate any of that, or I'm sure that that will be part of where you direct your efforts. But again, that might be another source for effectiveness data. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Guyda. We agree that this is going to take, it's a multi-pronged effect, to try and, again, bend this curve, to see this rapid increase in use. We're going to need all of the ways that we can pass both environmental strategies, like not allowing vaping on school property, as well as direct programming and prevention programming for adolescents to change the culture, to change the norms, and really have some more success in this area. Thank you.
Senator Rosenwald? No? Further discussion? How much money is in this now?
I just need to look that up very quickly. We believe that there...
Let me just ask a question, too. Are you asking how much is currently committed to vaping? Or generally smoking cessation?
I guess I'm looking for the figure that is $440,000 less than what you're asking for, because you're asking for $440,000 to fully fund this. So I'm wondering how much is already there?
So currently, an accounting unit 5608, Class 102, has $639,000 in it per year.
Thank you. I will be opposing this, and I'll tell you why. Unlike things like mental health that we just talked about, or even some of the long-term care things, the choice to smoke or to vape is a legal choice that somebody can make. And it seems like, in this case here, what we're doing as a state is trying to control people's behavior on a legal choice that they can make. And, I mean, if I was going to spend this kind of money, I would rather put it toward something that is not a choice. I think, you know, most people don't choose to have a mental health problem. So I just feel that, you know, with the $639,000 that you have, the department can certainly continue its efforts to encourage people not to smoke or vape and do their prevention efforts through literature or whatever they do. But I don't see the purpose in priorities of adding this additional money to what we already have. Any further discussion on item number three? Excuse me, item number four. Item number four. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll call roll. Senator Morse?
No.
Senator Hennessy? Senator Reagan? Senator Guyda? Senator DelaSandro?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And chair votes no. I lost track of what... It's three, four. So the motion fails. Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. I'd like to move item number six now.
Senator Rosenwald is moving item number six.
I'd like to second that.
And that's seconded by Senator DelaSandro. Senator Guyda?
Am I not correct that Senator Morse has additional information coming that would amend or modify what's proposed in six?
I believe that was stated before. A member can continue to move something, even though the comment has been made. Any further discussion on item number six? There being none. Senator Morse?
Motion is ought to pass, Mr. Chairman.
The motion is ought to pass.
No.
Senator Hennessy? Senator DelaSandro?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Guyda?
No.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the chair votes no. Motion fails two to five. Anything further? Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. I'd like to move item number seven.
Chair recognizes Senator Rosenwald, who moves item number seven. It's Amendment 1175S.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Senator Guyda. Chair recognizes Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. This item pertains only to House Bill 2. It doesn't have a cost, but it is necessary because of the move of the prescription drug monitoring program from Office of Professional Licenseure to Health and Human Services. We've had this program in effect, I think, for five years or so. And the legislature has been very careful on policy to restrict the use of very private medication history information for people who live in New Hampshire. And in addition, since that time, a constitutional amendment was passed, I think just three years ago, two years ago, in '18, that puts individual privacy into the New Hampshire Constitution. Most of this amendment is technical corrections that, just in the language of moving from an office to a department, weren't picked up in the original versions. But I do want to draw your attention to several parts of it. Starting on line nine on page one of it, if you look at that Roman III, it makes it clear that the department, when it releases statistical data for looking at the impact of controlled substance, legally prescribed and dispensed controlled substances, must have been aggregated or de-identified first. So the department can't be using identifiable data. And this is amplified down, starting on line 18. We never had to before, when it was at the pharmacy board, really, or particularly at OPLC, make it clear that the use, that access to this program was to be about providing care to a specific patient with whom the requister has a patient-provider relationship. This is important here because the department has physicians and dentists on staff who are registered with the program because of their license but are not providing care to every single person in the state of New Hampshire. So starting from line 18 through 21 makes it clear that this program is to provide medical care to specific individuals and that the person requesting the data has to be providing care to that individual, but not acting on behalf of either the state or the federal government or anyone they're subcontracting to. And this is not unrelated to the action this committee took the other day about closed-loop referrals. And finally, I would just draw your attention to the top of page two, which makes it clear that a licensed healthcare provider working for the department would be subject to discipline by their licensing board for unauthorized access. So I'm sure Senator Guyda has something to say about this, too. But I consider this a really, really, really important part of House Bill 2 changes. Thank you.
Senator Guyda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Senator Rosenwald, for your excellent explanation. This program was never intended for public use purposes. It was intended specifically for assisting providers, dispensers, in dealing with an individual problem with substance misuse. This actually expands the ability of the department to use the data for public use purposes, but absolutely establishes a firewall. It says very clearly, you can only use de-aggregated and de-identified data. No way can you track an individual's actions or care through the use of the data that you'll have access to in the department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion before us is the adoption of item number seven, which is Amendment 1175S. Call roll. Senator Morse?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy? Senator DelaSandro?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Guyda?
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries six to one. Is there anything further to be brought up on the public health? Seeing none. We'll go on to Glenn Cliff. That seemed to be pretty clean. Senator Hennessy?
I move we accept Glenn Cliff's budget as passed by the House.
Senator Rosenwald moves to accept Glenn Cliff. Figures as approved by the House, and that was seconded by Senator Rosenwald. Any discussion?
Good for Glenn Cliff. That's all I have to say.
What's that?
Good for Glenn Cliff. Get that roof fixed up there. Get that place squared away. Get that roof fixed up there. Get that place squared away, Karen, with the capital budget, and we'll be okay. And save a bed for me and Glenn Cliff, will you please?
Not anytime soon, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll call roll Senator Morse. Senator Hennessy.
Yes.
Senator De La Sando.
Yes.
Senator Reagan. Senator Guyda.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. And Glenn Cliff has been approved. Okay, I would, at this time then, like to to double back on some of those that we have addressed before. Like to take up the Department of Labor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are we gonna go back to on health Medicaid services, I think?
We can do that. Have members had a chance to look through the packet that came in? That's the, that would be the follow-up packet.
Well, there's something that I, that's why I wasn't paying attention, that Kevin just delivered that I just got from Kevin. It might have been on, Shannon might have had it before this, but I think it specifically addresses in Medicaid services, two and three. And just before we lose the department, I'd like to go over it. Yesterday, two and three were the, I mean, I'm not sure we can get there right now, but I can certainly talk about one that I looked at yesterday.
Medicaid was yesterday, page eleven forty-eight.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't, I wasn't present yesterday, so.
Senator Morse.
Yeah. So I specifically asked the question, which I'd like LBA to address, on what did we spend in twenty? Because these items have been moved around, but on two and three, what are we spending in twenty-one? What does the House have in their budget in twenty-two? And what does the House have in their budget in twenty-three?
Okay, and so I did ask the department to put something together on that, and they sent it to me this morning. And I did send that to you, Senator Morse, and I sent it to Senator Hennessy as well. I haven't yet sent it to the full committee, so not everyone has that. And I'm not sure there's anyone available from the department right now to be able to speak to that, because I know Henry Littman was at Governor and Counsel. So Karen, is there anybody who can speak to that document?
Athena is also not on. I can check to see if she's available to join us. Hold on just a moment.
I don't, I think we could copy this document because I didn't get it any sooner than anyone else, so I just got it on the fourth Senate. So if somebody wants to take my document and copy it.
Committee will be in recess for ten minutes?
So I'll have to get off, print it, and then get back on, right? Okay. Okay, great. Thank, thank you. Thank you, Deb. Bye. Hey, Pat? How do, how do I minimize the Zoom? Then I have to get the, she sent some stuff.
Let me call you back in, okay?
There it is. It's the packet.
Recaps?
Yeah.
It's five sheets of paper, so.
We need to print those. Now we'll go back to.
I think we could have brought it up, but then you don't want to read it that way either.
Oh, how do I mute?
Now you might be all right. Let's hope they're connected.
No, it's connected.
Okay, thank you. And so LBA is going to share the document that we were referencing. This, what we're looking at is the recap sheet items number two and three. And we'll look to LBA for an explanation of that. And again, the recap, the handout will be available so that people can see it.
Yep, and I actually think the department may be able to provide an explanation for this. You do have, is Athena on the call now?
Yes, Athena and Henry are both.
Okay, Athena and Henry are both here.
Henry may need to step away, though, when his item comes up at chance.
Good morning.
Morning. Okay, the department is recognized.
Sure. Karen, the tab that's up is the year-over-year changes, is that right? Or is it the two over three? Sorry.
The tab that's up right now is the fiscal twenty through twenty-three summary tab.
Yes. And I guess maybe if we could scroll down to the bottom, Kevin. Start there. So in this bottom section, what we tried to do here is to provide year-by-year comparison, excluding the major change of adding DCYF services for placements and out-of-home activity. And so you can see the trend by by fund source for each of the years. And comparing that to the Senate request. Up above that is the actual DCYF placement information showing in blue what was in years before it came over to, proposed to come over to Medicaid, and the Medicaid years is in red.
Senator Morse, there's a question?
Yeah. Henry, if we go down to the bottom, line, I can't see that. Is it fifty-three is general funds?
Yes.
As a state, shouldn't we be concerned about 2020 actual general funds, one hundred and thirty-eight million? Then we go into 2021, and you're projecting that it's gonna land at one hundred and ninety-two million. I don't think that increase is sustainable. So what's going on here and what can we fix?
Well, I think, I think in twenty-one, the, it's the enrollment increases and also, you know, in the outer years, we have the reduction in what the federal matches for the, for the chip population. We've also had the the rate increases. I think that in terms of moderating future changes, I think the rate increases that they're on any proposed in this fiscal year. We've also expect to see a moderation in rates. Some of what also as a result of the Medicaid met tax dish settlement, there's some monies that are now showing up here that would previously been paid out in uncompensated care. But I think that we're not expanding any of the benefit types we've in the negotiations right now with the managed care organizations in terms of, you know, we're seeing experience that's not suggesting that there needs to be a major increase in that.
But what I, I mean, that's a thirty percent increase year-over-year. And then we're building off of that in twenty-one in the House's budget. You know, and you're asking us to go up from the House's phase about four million. I don't know. On this document, it only looks like we're we're going up six and minus two. So we're going up four million dollars in the Senate phase here. That's not what that document that I was reading, you know, there's probably a couple of lines involved. But it seems to me why is the Senate changing its budget? I think the increase is phenomenal. I think the increase is phenomenal. I mean, it's not sustainable. And two, why would we change from the House's position over $4 million?
I guess that with respect to the House position first, I think that in terms of what we understand to be, you know, the more current cost trends and which are fairly nominal year-over-year at the moment. I understand the large increase that you're seeing there. I know, Athena, you want to add any comment here?
Athena, while you're commenting, there's two revenue sources here that seem to be going down quite a bit. One's met and one's rebates. Can you explain that, too?
Yeah, certainly. So the net revenue is tied to what Henry spoke of earlier, and that's the hospital settlement agreement. Provider payments is slated to receive slightly less than in previous years for the met revenue. Less met revenue means increased general fund need. For the drug rebates in fiscal year 20, we actually had a three-year look back for some drug rebates that are tied to medical claims and MCO drug rebates that we had to develop a workaround in order to claim them. So that was a three-year catch-up file, and that's why the drug rebates in fiscal year 20 were significantly higher than current years. So again, less drug rebates means a higher general fund need.
Senator Hennessy?
Thank you, Athena. I'm looking at the percentage of general versus federal from '20 to '21. And I would have expected '20 to be fairly similar to '21 because of the enhanced match. But it goes from 33% to 45%.
Yeah, so fiscal year '20 is a bit of an anomaly because although the public health emergency started in March, because of the three-month claim lag, we didn't start paying out the higher caseload numbers until July. So the expenses weren't quite as high for the enhanced FMAP that was retroactive to January.
Follow up?
Follow up. So, so I would have expected to see a better match percentage in '21, given what you just said, rather than in '20.
The difference, though, in '21 was we also had 12 months' worth of the higher caseload in addition to the offsetting enhanced FMAP.
If I could just add there, the enhanced FMAP is based on payment date, not service date. So even though we weren't paying on the higher caseloads yet, we were receiving the enhanced FMAP on those payments.
Just follow up. So why, why doesn't, why doesn't, why don't I see the enhanced FMAP in '21 then? I would just expect a lot lower general funds to be going out.
But the expenses were also much higher in '21 because of the increased COVID caseloads.
I see that. But the percentages, I would have expected the percentage of general funds versus federal to be lower in '21.
But the met also decreased, and the rebates also decreased in '21, which then have a direct effect on general funds.
And the chip, chip FMAP also decreased in '21.
What was the dollar amount of the chip FMAP decrease for '21?
I have the percentages in, at the top of this document. I don't have the dollar amounts broken out.
We can get back to you with that.
Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. Did the department lapse any of the additional FMAP for '20? Or is, and is the department planning to lapse any of it for '21?
For fiscal year '20, we accepted all the additional FMAP in 7948, and this is a non-lapsing account. So it carried over into '21. And I believe our projected lapse right now for '21 is around 11 million, Athena, 12 million? Is that correct?
Correct. Between 10 and 12 million.
So I'm sorry, you're, you're planning to lapse $11 million in federal funds?
In general, it's, it would be general funds.
Supplants general funds.
Right.
So if I could, even though the caseload is still really high because we can't do the redeterminations, we're not going to use all of that extra federal funds?
Correct.
One final follow-up, if I could.
Yes.
Could you tell us why?
Why we're not using it all?
Yes.
I'm not really sure how to answer that question, Henry.
I think in terms of the expense associated with it, you know, the enhanced FMAP has covered the, the cost of the increase, and the increase there, and so that we haven't had to, you know, use it all. And Karen, I just got called in for GNC. I'm not sure what to do here.
Go ahead. Go into GNC.
I'll be right back.
We'll follow up with any questions. Thanks, Henry.
One thing that I do want to add, though, is the fee for service.
Athena, you went out there a little bit. Could you get a little closer?
Better?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to mention that for the fee for service costs, and particularly for the dental services, due to COVID, we did see a very sharp decline in utilization for those services throughout fiscal year '21, in the last quarter of fiscal year '20.
So if dental service, the emergency dental services that are currently covered had continued at the same rate, our lapse would have been significantly less, if at all.
Correct. And that covers the children's dental services.
Any further questions? Seeing none at this time. We thank you. That will conclude our business for today. And we'll be back together on Friday at 1:00. So this time, I'm sorry, Senator Moss.
Be on there. Here's my concern. The, you know, the House, I understand what they did with the $50 million back of the budget cut. And I just don't think that's the appropriate way to govern, all right? I just, I've used it myself before, but I just think you do that when you get to the last minute, and it's, you can't figure anything else out. Here's my problem. What the House did look at is the fact that the spending in the department was increasing by X. And they basically said, when they looked at the whole formula, we're not going to figure this out. The department's going to figure it out. All right? So that's why they did the back of the budget cut. So now we eliminate the back of the budget cut, all right? So we're 50 million behind there. The requests on these documents are 100 million. And I just, so now you're 150 million behind, and I'm not understanding the justification when you're talking about lapses in accounts, you're talking about transfers out of accounts. One account, which we didn't go over today, 6 million was transferred out of a 48, a $49 million account. And then there's a request to add to it. I, I just am not going to be able to figure this out. I mean, I could go through these documents all day long, and I think the Senate should. And we should figure out what's going on. But then we, even on yesterday's call, we asked about the fact that the, the MCO contracts, you know, they rebate back if they don't spend up to a certain limit. So now we're working on '20 because that's the year they're clearing up. Well, there's a check coming back for some amount of money, 7, 8 million. I don't remember what the number was. So how does that factor in? Because it's not in the CAFR for '20. So it's money that's coming into this year. And then I would guess, out of '21, we have the same situation because we're hearing like dental, people can't go. I understand that. But that just means the MCOs can't spend the money fast enough. And are we getting another rebate? So you get all these buckets of money, which I've been here long enough, they're great at working them to the New Hampshire's advantage on match. That part I get. What I don't get is we're upping the spends everywhere. And I, you know, I'm a firm believer, I see there's a problem with mental health, I get it. But I'm not a firm believer that we increase budgets just to increase them so we can lapse. You know, I understand protection. I get that part. You know, you don't want to get to the point where you're overspending, but, you know, what's their lapse going to be this year? 100 million bucks? I mean, I doubt it's that high, but I bet you it's pretty high. And we're sitting there upping the budgets. And, and that's what concerns me about two and three under Medicaid. Because I don't want to underfund that line, but I certainly see there's something that isn't adding up in all these numbers that we're asking. And, and I just want to know how to get to a point where we can vote on an HHS budget on a number and not do where the House, do what the House did. I don't know the answer, Mr. Chair, but we're running out of days. And, you know, if the Senate had to bring an expert in from the outside, which the Senate certainly has experts in this room, but if we have to bring an expert from the outside in on Monday to develop a budget and come within reason of, you know, where the House came, on top of the fact, we got a whole table full of stuff, you saw it today, we're adding back in. I don't think our spend's going to be any less than the House in HHS, but I'm not upping a budget by hundreds of millions of dollars over the House's budget. I don't know. We need to find a way to get there and do it responsibly. That I get. But responsible isn't upping our budget by 50 million already, and another 100 million, and then everything that was on the table. That means the Senate's budget will be 200 million up in HHS. I'm not voting for it.
Thank you, Senator Moss. Any further discussion before we adjourn? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Moved, moved by Senator Geida, seconded by Senator Rosenwald. Call roll, Senator Moss.
Yes.
Senator Hennessy, Senator DeLisandro. Senator DeLisandro.
Yes.
Senator Reagan, Senator Geida.
Yes.
Senator Rosenwald. And the chair votes yes, and we will be adjourned until Friday at 1:00. Thank you.